Good evening, everybody, and welcome to Lyman Hall, Board of Education meeting. And this is our special Board of Ed meeting. And I want to start off, before we open up, with public comment. I do want to make a few comments and a few observations if I can. I know there's a lot of folks here to speak about the whole notion of food service and what are our intentions, and that's great, and I welcome any questions. But I know that there's -- I don't want to speak further, Board members, but I do feel that there's been, you know, it's been hard for us because we haven't been allowed to communicate a lot of components as we get information as directed by us because it is a process. It is a bid process, and we were -- we weren't allowed to communicate a lot in public. And I know that Dr. Menzo's been in touch with union leadership and communicating proactively. And we're at a point where I did ask, and I hope everybody got a chance to pull up the talking points, but I want to take a second and just talk about a few things. First off, I want to say, I appreciate the food service folks. You've been coming to every meeting, and you're here tonight, and I appreciate that. And I know how challenging that this has been for you, as well as, in our own little way, it's been challenging for us to be able -- not to be able to directly communicate with you, and that's not our style. Ours is one to be an open board, that we communicate as much information as we can. So I appreciate, and I want to recognize, the challenges that you folks have been dealt, and I appreciate, I think you've been amazing employees for the Wallingford Board of Ed, and that's never been a question. So I appreciate the challenges. Like I said, we've struggled with the ability to give information publicly, and that, again, is a combination of the bid process, the way the state of Connecticut operates, and the process that we have to follow. And we're continuing to get more information from the state. I don't believe, tonight, a decision will be made. I think that, I hope that that got communicated. I know Dr. Menzo has communicated that with leadership, union leadership. So I want to set that tone right up front, that no decision is being made, though we do have an executive session that is, again, giving us more information. I wanted to spend a second, just going over the food service, because I've gotten inquiries about things like the Cook's Table and the food truck. So I just want to spend a second and go over very briefly what has been provided to anybody that's in our audience tonight, as far as food service questions and frequently asked questions. So our main motivation, as Board of Ed, for why are we doing this? Why are we looking to outsource? Is really, the number-one reason is to provide quality, an increased quality and variety of food for our students. And then, secondly, the notion of the financial component, not having to subsidize the food service from educational funds. Again, I cannot, and I'm just going through these bullet points very quickly, underscore the hard work and the commitment of the staff. That's never been a question. That's very important, I think, for all Board members, and I can't underscore that enough. And Sadekso, no secret, has been the low bidder, who would be, if, if we go this route, would be, and I would urge Central Office, if I'm missing anything, please feel free to chime in, or Board members for that matter. Sadekso is the successful bidder. And this is a quote from them. "Our commitment to your employees is that 100 percent of your employees will be retained, including payroll and purchasing clerk, provided they complete the application process and pass their background checks. Hours and wages will also be protected and kept whole. Insurance coverage will be made effective immediately for what they deem as full-time employees, which is working 30 hours or more. They will honor original hire dates. They will honor current wages, or they'll look to improve wages." The question about ancillary programs specifically run at Lyman Hall, Lyman Hall Cook's Table. This, Lyman Hall Cook's Table is not impacted on any level, in any capacity. They will continue to function as they currently function; that will not change. The food trunk, the food trunk. The food truck is also, I've had people ask me about the food truck, and will that be impacted? In terms of the use, the active, the current active use during the school year with our Lyman Hall students will not be impacted, and that's been funded, and it talks, I'm not going to go into the details, but that's been funded through alternate funding sources that will allow us to continue with the food truck. I think those are my main points I wanted. Also, I wanted to mention, if Sadekso should be awarded the contract, and we accept it, it is our present intention to provide, they provide, the required performance bond or nor labor and materials payment bond. So they're responsible for that component, the insurance piece of it. I wanted to, I don't, I hope I did justice to the, to the components that are eligible for us to discuss. I don't know, Dr. Menzo, did I, again, I just wanted to hit on key points. More for TV land. Obviously, we can all read here, and you can read the talking points on your own, but this is more for anybody that might be watching us in a day, two days a week from now.
No, I think you hit the key points. I don't know, Mr. Arum, did you believe there were anything to be added?
And then I just also want to open it up, if there's any Board members that want to articulate any comments or anything, before I open up for Q and A. Okay, just want to make sure I'm on target. Everybody's good. Okay. So with that, I will start this with public comment, and is there any, I'm guessing there is. So I would ask each person to come up, just state your name and address, and come up to the mic, and welcome.
My name is Karen Sikowsky. I'm at 33 Brookdale Drive in Wallingford.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And I'm sure by the time this is over, you'll all have spelt Sikowsky. First of all, I want to go over your points.
Please.
I took the liberty this week of contacting some employees that worked for Sadekso, and they told me, yes, they will match your wages, and they will match your job, but what they're not telling you is, you will be on a 90-day probation. And that, a lot of them, will be gone before the 90 days is over. Now, Roxanne, I don't know who wrote this, but I kind of take offense to the, to increased quality and variety of food. I think these women have done a wonderful job this year.
You have a discussion of that. How proud I am of them.
This means nothing to me. I am a clerical employee with bumping rights. So it means nothing to me, whether they come or they go, but I'm not willing to walk away and watch them walk out the door, after all the years that they have spent here. In the, in the 20 years that I know of, the Board has given us $291,000 in 25 years, which breaks down to $11,000 a year. What other department did that for you guys? Who did it? Who made a profit of $57,000 this year? None of yous did. I'm proud of what they did, and I think it's time for you to explore that, and that you are proud of what they've done, because they have gotten zero credit this year, zero. Thank you.
I'm Marsha Novoselley. I live at 26 Rich Press Road in Wallingford. I am a parent, I'm a grandmother, I'm a taxpayer, and I am a proud food service employee at Yale's School. I stand before you asking why you are outsourcing food service and making judgments, even though we made tremendous improvements this year. Over the past 10 years, I have not seen one of you members come to Yale's School and witness the service that I and the staff give preparing and serving these children daily. This year, we turned this program around, and we have never gotten even a note of thanks. It is disheartening that the night you praised all the students and staff and other personnel that you voted to explore and, and contract outsourcing us. My concern is, how are the children, our customers, going to adjust, especially the ones with special needs, come this September? If the Board did their homework, and they find that outsourcing is not the solution, look at the past record that you have with other cities and towns. The solution would be to support the dedicated staff that works here, and maybe give us some credit.
My name is Deborah Brauch. I am the president of the Wallingford Food Service, UPSU Unit 30. I have worked for food service for 28 years, full-time for 23 years. The idea of a management company taking over a food service department saddens me deeply. This will affect the dedicated employees who work there, as well as the children who have, who have dedicated, who the people have dedicated time and hard work to. Workers will lose their pensions, insurance, sick time, that they have not used because they are dedicated to their jobs. We were informed by Dr. Menzo that if we could show a profit, he would, he would try to keep us. In these tough times, we worked hard. We made the goal, financial profit, and for the town. As for the children of Wallingford, who have fed, we have fed for many years and have come to know them also well, I don't think we will be able to give them the personal touch they deserve. We know, we know the kids. We know when they will come through and what their needs are, and we make sure that we do that for them. Our students are a huge priority to us. We give, we get to know what they do like and what they don't like. That will be something the management company cannot provide. I also want to say thank you to, to our food service director now that has turned this program around. He's done a, a wonderful job, and we wouldn't be where we are without him.
I have a question. Proceed.
You want to turn it up, or please?
I wanted to ask a question.
Sure.
Can you make one comment and not lose your right to speak?
Sure.
Oh, may I make one?
Sure.
Thank you.
You can make three. I mean, you're fine.
All right. I'm Parisey. Councilmen benefited from the good food these people produce over the years. I ate those cafeterias many a time, and I thank you for the fine food. I want to know, is there an answer to the question, or the statement, that the kids are not eating the food? I've heard that from a lot of people, not their side, the other side. Who the hell is paying for the food if the kids aren't eating it, and how do they overcome a deficit? I'd like an answer.
Mr. Arum, you have the numbers on the meal counts this year?
The meal counts as of May.
Ed, could you please speak into the microphone? Thank you.
The meal counts as of May, this year, are 360,358. Last year, 371,182. This year, and I'll get into the report later, there is a surplus of 57,75686. Also, the state has re-
May I ask you, where does that come from?
Well, 70,000 is additional state reimbursement from this year than last year. This year, we did receive 38,471 for healthy foods that they never had before.
Should they be penalized for that, or given credit?
I'm just telling you the facts, that this year versus last year, I'm just telling you that they've got 38,000 more because we applied, they applied for healthy foods.
Well, that was good for them. That shows good management, doesn't it?
Well, actually, it was our business manager that actually, for the first time, we were recommended to take that healthy food certification. We had not been recommended in the past, nothing to do with these folks. This has nothing to do with these folks, in terms of the certification and why we chose to, you know, participate. So that's a, that's a shift that came from the business office, frankly.
And how about the rest of the deficit? Where's that?
Well, we've made up. Well, go ahead. I think Mr. Arum was going to go through that. We've contributed, I don't know, what, 38?
Well, this, that, out of the 57, it's not included in that 38,000 that the Board has given the-
Okay. Fair enough.
But as, again, the total this year that the state has given is 570,000 roughly, versus last year of 500,000. 38,000 is the additional from the healthy foods.
38,000.
Correct.
Yeah.
The rest of the-
The other thing-
Comes from other grants, Child Matching Fund and the National School Lunch Fund.
And who applies?
It's sort of, you apply every month, once you have, what, the, the, the-
The rest of the-
Food service, and I have to, I have to signify it's correct.
Okay, so the food service had part.
Well, it hasn't been done by them, because they're in charge of that. It's why state statute gives.
Was it done every year?
Yes.
Yes.
It what?
Yeah, it's required by federal law.
The other thing is, Mr. Parisey, is the fact that we don't have a full, our food services director is at a lower cost this year, because he's retired, so therefore, the factor is that, you know, if we were, if the Board were to make a commitment, and we've talked about this for years, or for the last year, that if we made a commitment, we would be looking for a new food services director to stay for three years. So we have to come, we have to look at our comparables. So as Mr. Arum will report out in our next meeting, you know, that when we look at the costs of salaries, we still have unopened, we have unfilled positions in addition. So some of the deficit was made up through a variety of personnel factors, because we're not paying pension on the food services director and such, so, but you do, again, I do not want to undermine or underestimate the amount of work that's been done and the profit that's been increased. I know since February, when we were at a meeting, fortunately enough to have the Bureau Chief of Health and Food from the state, who clarified for all of us in the room that we could start serving pizza daily. I think that that was something that I know the workers had been asking for and wanted clarification on for years, because I know, once we gave up fried dough, that was a big loss. But the fact, once we were able to do that, and it was good that we had the Director of Health, Bureau of Health and Food Services there to share that with everyone at that meeting, there, there has been an increase in, in sales, and that's a great projection, and we're very fortunate that that occurred.
Well, that had to be attributed in some way to them also. Couldn't it have been just out of the sky?
Actually, it kind of did that night, really, to be honest, because the question was asked by a parent, so.
I'm here to call a favor, to say.
No, and I do too, so-
Just on the word, to give the credit.
I'm giving them the credit, but they can't, in terms of that pizza scenario, that's not a matter of, that was just, again, the State Department being there, the ask, the question was asked, and it was the first time that we got an answer that was favorable, because previous directors and, had said that we couldn't do that. So that's where that came from. Then it was their hard work that actually sold the food. We get that.
Right.
But that decision was made by the State.
It says a lot for your director, you have to-
Again, that was, it was a question that we all learned that night, including our present director.
Point is, he's the guy sitting in the chair.
Absolutely. I don't take away, I don't take away what he's done, but I just, again, you said you want to state the facts. That's the fact.
Kathy, did you have a-
Yeah, I just wanted-
Before-
I just wanted to-
And you can come up, I got to.
Say a little bit about the healthy food certification. You heard that this was the first year that we actually, as a Board, approved it. I want it known that in previous years, two reasons that I can recall why we didn't choose to go that route, for a long time, as you pointed out, we were making a profit. We didn't need the restrictions, and they were heavy restrictions, applied with the healthy food certification. They, we would be limited in, help me out here, Sal, with, with, I think it's like the-
Extracurricular activities.
Extracurricular activities, and things like that would all have been impacted, where they wouldn't have been able to serve the products that they wanted to serve. This past year or two, I'm not sure when, they kind of lightened up a little bit.
Well, there's, there's a, the real factor, I mean, besides that, the fact is that, because the district could have put in for a waiver, which we did this year for those items. The big factor was that they had the federal, the federal responsibility had increased so hard, so high in terms of smart snacks and the healthy snacks that had been served in school, that there was very little differential. And our previous director had always shared that there was a concern about the smart snacks and the, the cost, not the cost, but the nutritional requirements that would then be imposed. And that was presented to the Board numerous times, because the district I came from, we did healthy food certification from day one, because it was extra funds at the time, it was 10 cents a meal, and it's been decreased since. However, we decided this year, going into the school year, that we felt that it was important to take the additional, over $30,000 to help subsidize the program, and if it was going to, if we're already going to have to live up to those expectations, why not take the money for living up to those expectations?
Right.
If every other district was going to get that, that compensation, why didn't Wallingford want that compensation?
Right.
And, and again, Alan, as the director this year, was very supportive in that process. He helped fill out all the paperwork. I recently filled it out for next year as superintendent with Ed Online, so we've revaluated our enrollment next year, even though we're, we're still working with the present system. I took on that responsibility with Ed to do that, so we were able to take that. But Alan was very supportive in making certain the Board had all their questions answered this year, and felt comfortable with that decision.
Right. And again, I just wanted to point out, it wasn't something that the Board of Ed hadn't paid attention to in the past. There were reasons things change over time that now justified us joining the, you know, actually applying for the healthy food certification, and thus allowing us that extra 10 cents per meal. That's all.
Any other Board, okay, yeah, Nick, come on up.
I'm Nick Conamopoulos, former teacher at Lyman Hall, many years ago, 10 years ago.
Just give me your address for the record salary.
I'm moving. 3 Woodman Hill Road, at present, in Wallingford.
Do you need movers, or a home gift?
I need, I need some money.
Go ahead, sir.
I wrote a letter to the Board regarding my feelings on this. I was going to make it to the letter to the editor. I don't want it to be a punching issue, you know, I never saw that work before, so I thought I'd just send it to the nine Board members, and you would be able to see it. I just want to reiterate what I said in that letter to you people. Number one, I'm all over the country with my AAU basketball, and they, all you talk about is sports, their cafeterias, their schools, because we're housed in all of the schools, Tennessee, Florida. I grew up in Nashville and New Hampshire only because it's the closest one to us. They were in the middle of a two, three, four, five year, I don't know. They had, and let me tell you, they had 500 kids in their senior class, so they had definite advantage. That's 2,000 kids, and they also had their junior high attached to the building, so they had about 3,000 kids in the school. And they had a Sparrow's, Italian, they had McDonald's, they had an Asian, and then they had something else, I don't know. But they were still unhappy that they did not stay with their, their trusted people. I don't know if you know it or not, I know you don't have to worry about it now, but in the old days, kid forgot their money, kid didn't have much money, whatever, teachers used to loan them the money. That stopped. I used to say, why did that stop? Because now the ladies in the cafeteria take care of them, by writing their name down, having them bring their money the next day, so kids didn't go hungry. There's a personal touch that those people give every day that cannot be matched by any company that you can get. I'm going to say that right now. That's number one. Number two, I hope you did your due diligence on the company that got the little bid, because the places that I've gone, when they get somebody in for five years, they're stuck with them for five years, and there's no looking back. It's difficult to abandon outside source and go back to inside source again. Very difficult to do. And expensive, and, number three, you have a food service director who seems like he's interested in, I'm not going to lie, I know him, I started teaching with him 45 years ago, in this hallway, right down here. He was the food service, and I was in accounting. I think he's crazy to come back to work. He could be retired like me, and get fat like me, but he chooses not to. He chooses to work. He took it on as a challenge. He does share his challenges with me. He took it on as a challenge, and you know what happened? He got loyal to them. So now he's in a real bind. He got loyal to his workers, and he took on the challenge and thinks he did well with the challenge. Those are three good reasons, unless you did your due diligence with this other company, that you should stay the ship right where it is now. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment? Oh, yeah, come on up. Sure. Yeah, no worries, take your time.
Tim Thurston, 30 Thurston Drive, Wallingford. That's where I live most of the time. Couple of comments first, and some questions to ask for you. I've been in the business about 35 years, about 32 of them doing, doing the school food service. And I agree with, I think it was Karen that said, one of the things I would eliminate from the frequently asked questions about was to continue to increase the quality of the food and the variety of food. I deal with probably 150 school districts in Connecticut, and another 150 in Massachusetts. Wallingford is probably in the top 10 percent of the quality of the food. They demand, through your bid system, they want the top five. They have samplings, okay? That was comment number one. Number two, on the healthy food certification. And Kathy?
Right.
You are correct. Anybody that didn't go with it, because of the Healthy Hunger Free Kids Act of 2010, when the competitive foods came out, it was either you sign up for HFC and get the 10 cents, or look like, pretty stupid, to be honest with you. Okay? So it was a good thing, and it's money in your pocket. I had a couple of questions on the facts here. One of the, the mission of the Wallingford School Food Service, and I can read it there, committed to providing a variety of appealing nutritious reasonably priced meals, consistent with USDA guidelines. Conversely, the primary objective of almost every public or private company is to drive the bottom line. And by necessity, attaining a satisfactory bottom line requires significant, sometimes drastic, changes to the people and the programs that have been invested in the community. I'd like to go over just a couple of them. We have this letter from Sadekso, but I want to get a little further into it, all right? With labor and staffing, they all become employees of the food service management company. And it states here, they will all receive the same pay, the same, they didn't say the same benefits, but, so you can probably say they'll be receiving benefits, but not the Town of Wallingford benefits. I was just curious, is how long did Sadekso say they would honor the pricing structure? Or the, the labor structure? Was it for the length of contract? No, I, I'm just, a couple of questions. The other thing that I've seen, most management companies do, all right? Town of Wallingford gets $3.10 at the high school, and that's for all their type A lunches. What a management company does is, they'll come in and, they'll charge 3.10, and then on the, such as Norwalk and Branford, they'll go up to 3.35, 3.55, 3.85, and then they'll start a different pricing structure for those that are not, such as like 4.50 or $5 for an exclusive lunch, like a Borishead meal, or a better pizza, you know, like a flavored pizza. Do they have any plans on, have they had any plans on price increases that they've told? I guess-
I kind of feel like our price is mandated by the federal government, as far as the max that we can charge. I mean, we're not-
No, there's a differential that we have to keep rising towards.
Right.
But there has been not, again, as you know, in your food services background, it's a one-year contract, that's renewable four times, one year at a time. So again, right now, our focus, and the Board's focus, and obviously, an RFP would focus on the one year at that point, so there hasn't been a discussion of food increases. Ed has been more involved with the contract negotiation. And again, I don't want to speak outside of the terms of that negotiation, but in terms of the RFP, which is a public document, which I'm sure you, you either have a copy or could get a copy of, it talks specifically about the first year of the contract as required by the state of Connecticut.
So what you're saying is, the second year, they're most likely going to come up and say?
I'm not saying anything, that's what you just said I said, but I didn't say-
There's certain trends- There's certain trends that they've gone along. As I've said, most of the management companies are up in the 350, 385 range for a type A lunch. And I will say this, in dealing with the schools that I've dealt, Wallingford has been and always, and is now, one of the least expensive prices in the state of Connecticut. You do a tremendous job. I just wanted, and to do that and have a $57,000 surplus, good for you. The other thing that was not, oh, glasses. The other question I had was, you mentioned about the decline in revenues on the, I guess there was a decline in revenues of $10,000 or $20,000 from last year?
No, revenue has gone up this year because of schools, healthy schools.
The decline was in the number of meals served. We're about 1,000 less meals served thus far this year.
How does that compare to the enrollment in the town of Wallingford?
The enrollment decreased less than 100 students this year.
Less than 100 students?
Yeah.
That's a good one.
Yeah, we're very fortunate.
So I would just say that, I don't know if the decisions are gonna be made on your parts, but please compare apples to apples, okay? With the fact that we've just said that it's a year-to-year contract, okay? What are they gonna do in two years? And as this gentleman said, once you have them in there, to send them out for a second year and say, no, we don't wanna go up on price, we're gonna have to renegotiate, it's a thought. The fact that these, these fine ladies and gentlemen have done, they're on the right road, that's the part that I like the best. They made a profit this year, they're making a profit this year. You know, with the leadership under Alan, et cetera, how far can they go? I don't know. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Bob Rosner. I live in Rosenholme Lane in West Haven. I've been a food distributor selling in schools exclusively in Connecticut for 50 years.
I just have to say, technically, and I'll allow you to speak briefly, but technically, you need to be a resident of Wallingford. But I will allow it, but I'm gonna ask you to keep that under consideration. I appreciate that, sir. I thank you for that.
I've sold, in the years I've been in business, every single food service company operating in Connecticut. I've sold them. I've been one of their vendors, every single one of them. I know how they work. But just to give you an example, a few years back, New Haven had a food service company. They were having trouble with, the employees weren't complaining they weren't having with the food they were serving. The district was losing a million dollars a year, but they'd been in there for quite a while, a contract. And I was approached by someone in the city and said, if we gave you an item number, a chicken number from Tyson, could you tell me what you would charge us? I said, sure. I gave you the number. I had New Milford Schools, five schools, sold, bought that particular item from Tyson. I looked quickly, I gave them the price. Five schools. New Haven has 35 schools, their price was $3 higher than they were paying for that product. There's no way that the school district, the Board of Ed, has any idea what they're getting. They get a price, but there's only one vendor that supplies the food service company. There's one vendor. For whatever reason, that vendor doesn't bid anywhere else where there's a self-bop. Tim understands, I'm a competitor of his. But every district that we go to and we bid on, we compete with each other. The company that supplies the food service companies doesn't bid because they're not competitive. They can't. But they can service the food service to privately run companies? I don't understand how they do it. How can they be competitive there but not wanna bid when they have to go out to a regular open bid? When you, when you buy their product that the food service company provides you, they're buying a chicken, another chicken, they're buying it nationally, you don't have any say, you don't know if it's competitive, you don't have, you have no idea what their, if their prices are good or not. So that was just because I've been selling them for so long and I've, and I've dealt with at least five or six of them that are currently operating in the state of Connecticut. They all work the same way. There's, there's a lot that goes on. In that $3 a case that they were hiring in New Haven, there's a lot that goes on that does not come back to the school district. If you have any other questions or like to talk further, I'd be happy to, but I just wanted to give you some information.
Sir, I have a question for you. If you're saying if it's, say Tyson Chicken Tenders or something, the vendor does not shop around or get a better price, they just take what that...
I beg your pardon? They just buy it from one vendor, a company called Cisco. They buy all their food from them.
At whatever...
They chop it around, they don't say, how much is your price? How much is, they don't call any names, they how much, they buy it from a company.
But can they decide what quality? Because there are different types, the meat inside is different. They can do that, though. I mean, they...
They can change quality. As I said, I sell this all over, all over the state too. A lot of these are buying, and Wallingford is as good as anywhere. I mean, they sell the same product, they're selling reddish. So I don't know how they're gonna raise the quality and I certainly don't know how they're gonna lower the food costs. But that I don't understand.
My name is Juanita Stainton and I live in 68 Upper Trelane. I have a question. When I heard about this company coming to be our company serving our children their food, I read about this company and what I read made me really nervous. Seeing that a company of this magnitude got this billions and billions of dollars company, it's all about money. And because of that, they tend to do things to get more. The more you have, the more you want. Greediness. London, New England was chasing them away because they found traces of horse food in the food that they were served. Hospitals, clinics, air force base, I mean, all military bases and schools, universities, it's a list, a long list of places that forced them to recollect all the meat that was given to those places because it was horse food in it. And they find out that the chairperson of that company had, owns as well, a horse riding racing place. So what was happening with the horses? They were not running there, is that where the food was coming from? I don't know. My question is, is Wallingford planning on doing, once in a while, some quality control to make sure that our children and our grandchildren will not be served something besides beef or pork or chicken?
Obviously, that would be completely unacceptable on any level. So I'm not sure, all I know is The Citadel did just sign up to work with this company, so I know that's one of their newer clients. So I'm assuming that we would, we have the same expectations that The Citadel would have for our students in terms of those qualities. Exactly. For that quality. Did you wanna, did you have a question? Okay. Okay. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Bob, come on up. Hate to make you get up.
I was told that this company is being released from Middletown and I think West Haven next, was it?
That's what I was told.
Yeah, there were two and then there's one other town too.
What is it?
They're still in West Haven and the contract has not been closed in Middletown.
So it isn't being closed? They haven't been hired?
They haven't signed anything yet.
To be determined, or, Bob. To be determined, I think, for Middletown.
Pardon?
To be determined for Middletown.
Okay, so it isn't signed yet.
I guess that's what you're saying, yeah? We don't know. Yeah.
Okay. You know, Bob, the other time, I had to check. Most of the towns in Connecticut that...
Actually, I don't, I think they're actually only in about three...
Well, about 13, 14.
13, okay, 13, sorry. And it has done a check of each of the districts.
I mean, shouldn't we kinda get a feel for how those towns feel? They're satisfied with the service?
Ed, you can speak to the data that you collected, especially, you know, I know you mentioned West Haven, I think they have a $200,000 profit this year.
They're in Danbury, they're in Rocky Hill, they're in Monroe, Stratford, Nogatuck, West Haven, Windsor Oaks and Bethel. Those are the ones that I've checked. Bethel is making a profit, they love them, $50,000. West Haven, they're making a profit. Nogatuck, they were breaking even, but they're making a profit this year. Stratford, they guarantee, there's a partnership. He did not tell me whether there's a profit or a loss. Rocky Hill's a profit and Danbury's break even.
How long have they been in those?
Danbury's probably been there 10 years at least, minimum. West Haven's been there since 2014, I think. I couldn't tell you about the others, I don't have that information.
No, that's fine. So you don't, no one's having a problem?
Not the ones that I contacted, no.
Would I be able to get a copy of that list?
Yeah.
So I could follow myself, not that I'm doubting you.
Yeah, no problem.
Some things I'd like to do. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
My pleasure.
Yes, come on up. 900 North Farm Road, 900 North Farms Road, Wallingford. In the beginning, you mentioned that there were two reasons why you were considering switching over. Number two was profit? Or money?
Well, not really profit, but not, well, so that we're not subsidizing.
And the first reason was quality theory?
Quality theory.
But everything he just mentioned was money. Has anyone asked the parents of all these towns using this company? Do they like the food? Is the food good? Because there are children who will buy the food but not eat it.
Yeah, go ahead.
I can actually personally speak to that. I went to University of New Haven and Sodexo is the food service company that we utilize and I eat there very often. I personally enjoy the food, but I can only speak for myself.
I'm sure your food is a lot different than the kids' food. I go to Southern and our food is different.
What do you mean, different? What do you mean? You mean that what they serve at universities and colleges is different than what they serve high school or elementary?
Yeah, sure. Have you ever eaten lunch at the elementary school here?
I have not, no.
Have you eaten lunch where this new company serves?
Well, I wouldn't be entitled to go to a school to, you know, I mean, you know, out of town. Well, I'm not gonna go to Dan, I can't go to Danbury and just go eat at their school. I'm not trying to be facetious, but I can't go to another school. You know what I'm saying? Another district.
No.
Excuse me?
The worst I can happen is that they say no.
Well, they would say no. I have no right to be eating in another district's cafeteria. I really don't. As I wouldn't expect anybody to come to our cafeterias, you know, and be allowed to eat. That, you know, they wouldn't even give me access to the school. Frankly, I have no reason to be there. Really, I don't. And I respect that. I'm not saying that in a negative way, but I really don't have the right to go eat at these places.
If you're considering switching over to another company, then you should call these schools and say, hey, you know, can we stop by one day and have lunch?
Right.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Hold on, someone who don't perceive. Okay, yeah, come on up, Mr. Sullivan. Just ask you to state your name and address, please.
Okay.
Thanks.
John J. Sullivan, 62 Duff Street. First thing I wanna mention is there's a car in the fire zone out here. Does that belong to anybody?
Yeah, mine.
Okay. That's not good.
While I was running late, I didn't wanna keep you waiting.
Okay.
I just ran up, pardon?
I understand. I see the animosity between what's happening here and the people who represent, I believe, the bargaining unit. My questions stem around the bargaining unit. These folks, many of them are represented by the union, am I correct? What happens to the contract?
We've had this conversation with the union and actually there's conversations that need to continue, but the union has a responsibility to act. The contract is done at the end of this year, so June 30th, our contract is over. So there would be conversations that need to occur with the union. And that is something that, again, as I said, we've met, we've had a lot of communication, we've actually met with our attorney on this. So again, it's premature for me to say exactly what happens or anything at this point because it wouldn't be in my purview to say because they also have rights that they have to either exercise or not and I can't speak for them.
Do we know what Sodexo has any bargaining employees currently employed?
Again, I can't really, I do not wanna speak to that at this point because I don't know the exact information on that. So I can't, so...
Just want to clarify, you don't know if they have bargaining employees right now working?
I do not know. I was concerned about our employees. I was concerned about making sure that we had the information about the 100% employed, the benefits, all of that information. So I guess, you know, again, I will be happy to check on that and get into that and get more information, but my number one concern was making sure because we all knew that the community concerned, like somebody like you who's on the council, would want to be concerned about employees. So that's where my first concern was.
It's a big, big responsibility because I work in labor management, as you probably know, absolutely. And that's a big ticket. A couple of items I saw on the internet, and I know you can't believe everything on the internet, I mean, at one point they told me I was a good counselor. But I understand this corporation really doesn't treat its employees very well. I've seen a lot of negative feedback. I've seen some positive feedback too, but I've seen a lot of more negative feedback. Training opportunities, there are none. Opportunities to advance in the corporation, minimal. Management really doesn't care about the employees. And these could have been written by employees, don't get me wrong, because I know it goes both ways. But there was a consistency in the messaging. And the messaging was they don't take care of their people, which is a concern. Look, I'm all for saving money. I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the cafeteria has been like a break even this year. Am I wrong?
No, as was mentioned, they're making a slight profit. They're making a profit, which is positive. So it's in a very different place than it was last year and that's where the credit lies with the employees and the director.
Right, but you have gone on a manager, where is he? I got his here. Al Belichick, who was here when I was at high school back in 77. God, you have a great hairline, I gotta tell you, you still got it. So is there a possibility that with the right person in place, this could be break even or do better? Because Al's proven that this year. Has anyone looked at that? I look at the faces, I think that he has done it.
It's all a factor. John, it's all a factor. And I mean, these are all factors that I don't think this board has made. All we've agreed to at this point is to do our due diligence. I don't think this board, I can't speak for other board members, but I haven't made up my mind yet, frankly. So I think we're still in that process. I'm sorry if you disagree, if you don't believe me, that's certainly your prerogative, but, 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 but that's okay. That's okay. You don't have to believe me, but I haven't made up my personal opinion on this yet. And I, and this is a valuable process, as is getting, and you've raised questions that force me to think about things. That's all good, but I personally, please don't assume I've made up my mind. I just, I'm bothered by that. Give me some credit for 12 years on the Board of Ed, that I do my due diligence and I do my homework. And maybe my decision will be something that you don't like. I'm sorry. And maybe my decision will be that's something you do like. That's great too. But, you know, please be respectful of the people up here, that I don't believe they've made up their mind, but we are, we have, and I've said this consistently... But we are, we have, and I've said this consistently, me personally, I have a fiduciary responsibility on this board to make sure that we aren't a burden, a further burden, to, when I stand in front of him at Town Council, and the mayor, and other eight counselors, to understand why our budget is whatever it is. So we all have responsibilities and jobs, but, and I, I don't mean to get heated about it, but please, please allow us to do our job, and please give us the respect that we are doing our due diligence. And that's all I ask for, but, go ahead.
And I would ask that you do the same for these folks?
Yeah, I, I totally agree.
Madam Chairman, they've shown in a year, I think they knew their jobs were kind of on the line, their employment in the current environment.
Their, their jobs aren't on the line, but the way, the way it's positioned would change, that is true.
Okay. Their jobs with the Wallingford School System, those are on the line. These folks want to continue working for the Wallingford School System. They've proven this year that they can do it and come under budget, and maybe make a little extra, with the right person running the program. I think...
Just remember, we did subsidize them. And we don't have a full-time director. Just, those are factors that cause us additional...
We also, we also paid $3,000 to the nutritionist this year for the stellar review that he...
I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm sorry, ma'am. If you want to come up to the microphone, you're absolutely entitled to do that, but right now, Mr. Sullivan's...
Yeah, let's, let's, let's stay working.
Go ahead, John.
We're not helping the cause here.
No, that's okay, it's all good.
And I would speak, Roxanne made, made the point earlier that she hasn't decided. I believe her, I've known her a long time, she's open-minded, I don't think she's made a decision. I just get an eerie feeling right now. But if Mr. Belichick has brought the program to the financial status it's in right now, I would propose we consider giving him the opportunity next year to do the same thing. This company's always gonna be around, they're hungry for this contract, we know that. This is not something, if, if we talk to these, the bargaining unit, say, "Look, guys, here's the proposal. We either got to break even or make money, that's the bottom line here. And if we can't do it, then we know that this corporation is always out there. And they're more than willing to take this contract." Now, let's face it, it's a lucrative contract, I'm sure. They're not gonna say, "Oh, you're gonna give it to us today, well, that's it for us." But I think we gotta believe in our people. I mean, I have to do that every day, they can't, they, you gotta believe their people. You gotta, you gotta set the expectation, and you guys gotta meet the expectation, that's the bottom line. So, look, I'm in support, and I hope you would even consider continuing this at least one more year. Let's see where it falls. Roxanne, you said you had some subsidization this year, how much did you, how much was it?
About thirty, thirty-eight thousand?
Thirty-eight thousand.
Thirty-eight thousand?
And what was the savings so far?
That, as of May, fifty-seven thousand.
Oh, so it's a plus, that's, which is kind of nice, so it's a plus about twenty Gs, rough.
Well, and then again, we, okay, I, yes.
That's without the subsidy.
Right.
Without, oh, without the subsidy. Okay, I misunderstood, I thought that, how much was the subsidy, did you say?
Thirty-eight thousand. But that was taken out of the final figures, so it's fifty-seven thousand. Yeah, so it's fifty-seven plus thirty-eight, is what they have.
Okay, understood, thank you. But I, I hope you just consider one more year, set the expectation, set the bar, this is where we gotta finish, guys. And if not, we all know what's gonna happen, we can prepare for it, we're all good. And, you know, I, I understand in business, decisions have to be made to save money. The school system, the budget's only gonna get grown, we all know that, too. Education is a primary factor in our budget. Nick will tell you that, Bob, my good friend Bob will tell you that, I know that, you all know that. But, you know, I don't come to these meetings often, but this one kind of sprung a nerve with me. And if I'm up here, that means I think it's pretty serious. So I would ask you to please consider one more year. Set the bar, set the expectation, if they don't meet it, this company is right out there believing, they'd be happy to come the next year. I don't know what difference a year would make, if we're hemorrhaging money, that's a different story. Okay, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Yep, sure, no problem, no, I'm good.
Nick Camahos, Three Woodman's Hill Road. First of all, to my friends with me, the kids, don't cut these guys short, they're good people, I work with them. They don't, are gonna do what they think is best for this town, I'm gonna tell you that right now. There's no personal agenda from the superintendent right down the line, I can tell you that right now, that's number one. Number two, his name is Belichick, Bill Belichick. You couldn't wear his apron. That's number two.
Sorry, Al.
His name is Belichick, Bill Belichick, Al could not even wear the guy's apron.
Yeah, he died.
Yeah. But the only thing I want to say, if you take the money you put into it this year, you subsidize them, put it over your budget. What are we, eighty million?
Oh, no, 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 over a hundred.
Oh, she's been here for twenty years.
Yeah, we're over a hundred.
So if you take that money, put it over that, and say, you know, "That's what, that's what it cost us this year to keep what we have," really, it's a good investment. It's really a good investment. Do, if you can latch on to him for one year or two, try to do that.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna close this down then, and I'll leave it, I'm gonna open up to board members, and then I'm closing this down. Go ahead, Mr. Vado. And any other board members?
I thought you were closing me down, too.
Oh, I would never do that, no, never.
I really don't know where to begin, but, because it's, it's been, anyway. I've been on the board number, quite a few years, and I would hope people pretty much know that if I have a question, or I disagree with board members or the superintendent, I'm there to, and I do that all the time. If I have a problem, I, I say it. I, I don't, you know, that's just me. Let me also say that being in a, in a school for thirty-seven years, oh no, huh, more than that, I won't, forty-something years, people in the cafeteria have always been my friends. I mean, they feed me well, they take good care of me, they always have. What I'm, I guess what I'm trying to get at, is this has not been an easy thing to think about. It's a very difficult decision to make, because as Roxanne very clearly and eloquently stated, there's a balance we have to always play, there's a balance act. What's, what we think is morally correct, what we think is fiscally correct. And as Roxanne said, she's the one who has to stand before the Town Council and answer those questions, and they do, because they're the ones that are to give us the money or not. And also face the town, and be able to be, give responsible answers, why we're spending over a hundred million dollars in education. So we have to always do our due diligence, and that's the thing, at the, some of the opening statements, we do our due diligence. I take exception to any remarks that say differently. We put a lot of time on this board, and we do do our homework. I've been online, I can't tell you how many times, looking up this company and others, okay? I know all about Thornton, I know about the other company, Thornton, Thurston. I buy from Thurston, from my school. I mean, you know, it's, it's a balance, it's a balancing act all the time. One person said at the very beginning that you've had a profit for years and years and years. Being on this board since nineteen ninety-nine, I know, yeah, there's been a profit, but at what expense? There have been many years when some of you sitting in this room have called me up as chairperson of the board to complain about working conditions, because they wanted to make a profit. Lines at Yalesville School, I'll say that, I know that for a fact, back then, there was one line, even though there were two entrances and two exits, because the manager would not allow the other opening, the other to open. And children had to wait almost their whole lunch period to get their lunch. So, yeah, there was an expense made, but somebody suffered for it. Managers were told to go home and do their work at home, not in school, because there was no time to do their numbers and the books. So, you know, I, I want to tell you that I know both sides, and I've heard both sides, and I do understand what you're fighting for, and what you're, and what you're worth, and what you do. But again, it's a balancing act. It wasn't all great one way or all great the next way, it's not gonna be, we have to take that chance. I was sort of, the reason why I voted, and I'll tell you why, to go forward with this, just to figure things out, and to hear what everybody had to say, and the final decision has been made. But when I'm told that the workers get to keep their job, their benefits, and their pay at the same, would you blame me for not wanting to go out there and listen to what the company has to say? Why wouldn't I? Nobody's gonna get fired, nobody's gonna get replaced. Why wouldn't I listen to what this company has to say? And unfortunately, as Roxanne brought out at the very beginning, our hands were tied with certain things, because it's of the, of the process. We didn't make up that law, I can't believe what we had to go through for this thing. And it's the state, the state laws and what we have to follow, it's ridiculous, really. I can make, we can make decisions to spend a hundred million dollars of your money, if you live in Wallingford, yet for something like this, we can't even look at the bid, the piece of paper and figure out what's going on? It's ridiculous. But nevertheless, it's what we have to do, and I do my due diligence, and I dare anyone to say differently. I can tell you the number of meetings that I've gone through every month to make sure that your kids, if you have kids in this system or grandchildren, I do, get the best quality education and the best food. I'm here to figure, to get what's best for children, that's why I'm here. I've been an educator for almost forty-five years. I have their best interests at heart all the time, but I must do the due diligence, and I am. Thank you.
Any other board members? Okay, with that, I thank everybody, and please feel free to stay. We are, I'm gonna get a motion to go into executive session for the discussion of candidates for teaching positions, acceptance of resignations, and request for proposals, we, that'll last, start again. Request for proposals regarding food service RFP.
So moved, second.
I have a first and second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries, we're in executive session.